Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates in the August 9th primary election for this special election to fill the remainder of a term on Blaine City Council, Ward 1. The top two vote-getters in this primary will be on the ballot in the general election, November 8th. I'm Linda Rogers of the Anoka-Blaine-Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters, who sponsor Meet the Candidates. I live in Anoka and cannot vote for any of these candidates. All candidates were invited to this forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters, and we advocate for important issues. This forum is about informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage, l w v a b c m n dot org. We invite people of all genders and young adults to join. The candidates will answer two introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters. We'll end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions, and one minute for each of the other questions. Candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. Welcome to Blaine City Council, Ward 1, Candidates Lori Soroya and Dick Swanson. We'll begin with our introductory questions. Candidate Soroya, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Great, thank you so much for that question, and thank you for hosting this forum and for this opportunity. So my name is Lori Soroya, and I've lived here in Blaine for 17 years. My husband and I have three kids that we're raising here in Blaine, ages 11, 6, and 2. So I've been involved in city leadership for the past seven years as a member of the Blaine Charter Commission. I have a law degree here from Mitchell-Hamlin School of Law, and I've, my career has focused on managing nonprofits. I've served in executive leadership roles for nearly 15 years. So I do have a strong record of service and achievement throughout the state. I'm a recipient of the Governor's Community Leadership Service Award. I've received the Minnesota-Bush Foundation Fellowship. I've served on numerous boards and entities throughout the state, such as the Judicial Branch Committee for Equality and Justice, the St. Paul Human Rights Commission. I'm a board member of the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits in the past, and I've been on the Board of Directors of Mitchell-Hamlin School of Law. So I have an extensive background in leadership and management. And my motivation for running, so my career has focused on a very basic premise, and that is that everyone deserves to be treated with respect and dignity. And that's why I'm running. I want to bring the attention back to Ward 1 residents. We've seen so much growth and so much change in Blaine, that now is the time to really focus on Ward 1. Thank you so much.
Candidate Swanson, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
I'd like to thank the League for putting this debate on. And I've lived in the first ward for 38 years, and I served on the Blaine City Council for 26 years, and I retired. And I really didn't think I was going to be here again. But unfortunately, this is a rather unique election. We can have up to five brand-new councilmen out of seven by the time this election is done. And quite frankly, I've put too much time and energy into the city to not try to put some knowledge back on the city council if that were to happen. I've, like I say, I've been on the council for 26 years. I've been a chair, chair of a townhome association, treasurer in a townhome association. I retired from Mindot as Director of Finance, so I understand project funding, how projects fit together, which will be entirely important on continuing the Highway 65 project. In addition, I really believe with new councilmembers, I can bring some knowledge in how the city works, and help new councilmembers to understand the city and their role in the city, because they have to remember that one councilman can do nothing. Four councilmen are required for anything. And once again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity.
And again, candidate Swanson, what are your goals for Blaine's future?
I think my goals for Blaine's future pretty much corresponds to the goals I had when I first started running for office, which is we want a city that treats all citizens equally, that provides a housing opportunity for singles, young families, families with children maturing, single-nester, older citizens, that everybody can find housing and opportunities for amusement and employment inside the city. Unfortunately, in today's economy, getting housing for all is not that easy to do. Blaine is lucky in that it has a lot of diverse housing types, but we are in danger of losing some of the housing types, particularly the starter homes that run along from 85th west of 65 up far into District 2 and 3. In addition, manufactured homes provide a lot of starter housing for people, and that is a type of home that the city has to work to maintain. And through zoning, the city can help maintain that, even though some of the elders have a desire to sell out and redevelop their land. But the way their land is zoned, the city can't stop that from happening. So those are, but basically, I just want to bring experience back to the city council in this unique election. Thank you.
Candidate Soroya, what are your goals for Blaine's future?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. So new is good. The decisions that were made 30 years ago are having a direct impact on us today, and we need to do better. 10 years ago, I was on Highway 65 when I witnessed a horrific car crash. The young man, who was in his 20s, was slumped over, lifeless, in his driver's seat. This was 10 years ago. My son, who was barely a toddler at the time, he witnessed it. And in those 10 years, that intersection has not changed. And that, to me, is a failure of the city council and of the past 30 years on the city council. A woman was just killed a month ago on 109th and Highway 65. And so my biggest priority is to fund and fix Highway 65. I have a background in fundraising and lobbying at the legislature, and that's what we need someone to do, to show up for Blaine and for Ward 1, and to get the job done. Another major issue that we're dealing with in Ward 1 is the North Town property. I've seen that property go from a place where we could hang out on Fridays to what it has become now, and it's led to an increase in crime, and homelessness, and traffic issues, and just so many problems for the people that live there. And I've met people in my ward and my community that are really struggling. We have youth that are committing suicide. This is an epidemic that we're dealing with in Blaine that the city needs to get involved in. I've heard from too many mothers, too many families who are hurt, and we need to address mental health and deal with the bullying and harassment. Thank you.
The next questions came from the public via our website. Once they came in, I grouped them by topic. The questions that came in are about public safety, diversity, public involvement in decision-making, transportation, unions, environment, and the government's role and Candidate Soroya will be the first to answer this question on public safety. What does community safety mean to you?
Community safety, I think in Blaine, Ward 1, the first thing that comes to my mind is Highway 65. People are dying on this highway. They're being killed because it is dangerous. So that, to me, again, is a priority. We need to get the funding, we need to fix it. There are great plans, and I've seen so many plans in place over the years, but we're at the point now where we need to find the money and fix it. And there is money. It's a matter of lobbying and, you know, having those partnerships and reaching out to people to get that money. And we have an amazing police department here in Blaine. I definitely think there are opportunities for partnership. When I meet with my neighbors in Ward 1, you know, there are concerns around, you know, drug deals in their backyards, literally in their backyards. There was a homeless encampment in Ward 1. And so these are issues that are leading to crime, that we need to partner with law enforcement and hold community safety forums, and really do the outreach that we need to resolve and address these problems once and for all.
Candidate Swanson, what does community safety mean to you?
Well, to some extent, same as Lori. But our police force is one of the few in the area with the homeless, where they don't try to drive the homeless out, but they actually try to find places for the homeless to be, to help them find services if they need it, and we hope we have to continue to do that. Another thing about community safety is our youth. We're way too many suicides happening right now, and that means that we have to get into the schools and provide opportunities for children not to feel alone, not to feel like they're being bullied, and to help them come forth when they, they need help. The last thing is the seniors. I'm noticing more and more in shopping areas, that the areas that used to be senior parking are now becoming pickup parking spots, and that doesn't help seniors at all. Thank you.
And again, candidate Swanson, what can the city do beyond policing to improve public
One of the big issues beyond policing is education. We have to let people know what, what health activities are around. We have to let people recognize where transit, where speeding is dangerous. We have to get into the neighborhoods, which is something that, since I've been off the council, I recognize we're not doing real well, is we have to get into the neighborhoods, meet with the people, let them know what opportunities exist to help with the community, and we have to listen to them about what their, what their feels for the public safety And we also have to look at the area of shoplifting and petty crime that's happening, because that, Blaine is not a high-crime area, but people feel it is because they see things happening in their neighborhood.
Candidate Soroya, what can the city do beyond policing to improve public safety?
Yeah, I think community engagement is key to any, you know, any partnership with the city. When I come to city council meetings, unfortunately, I only see a handful of residents here, and probably none from Ward 1. As I mentioned, I've lived in the same house in Blaine for 17 years, and I've never had a city council member knock on my door. And that needs to change. We have a lot of serious issues. We're headed down this road that, for me, as a mother who's raising her three kids here and is planning to stay here for another 20, 40 years, that needs to be resolved now. We need to decide at this moment what kind of city we want to be. Do we want to keep, you know, going down the road that we have been the past 30 years, or do we want a change? Do we want new leadership and new changes? So community engagement, as I mentioned, is one strategy. Another one is really addressing some of the dangerous issues, the intersections. We have several serious intersections in Blaine that need our attention. Speeding in residential areas is also a problem.
And one more question on public safety, and this is for candidate Soroya. What strategies might city council consider to eliminate human trafficking in Blaine?
That's a great question, and I'm so glad that's being asked. So this is an area that a lot of people really don't know is happening in our communities, especially in Ward 1. I actually met with the carpenters' union recently, and they talked about the human trafficking that's involved around, you know, when it comes to building. So we need to make sure that we are hiring contractors who are ethical and not engaging in these practices. We have major events happening right here in Blaine, so making sure we're empowering our police department and working with them to address some of the human trafficking and other problems that come with that. So this is something, human trafficking definitely needs our attention, and it needs our education at a city. I think we like to think that these are issues that are happening in bigger cities, but Blaine is the largest city in Anoka County. We are among the top 10 cities, largest cities in the state. So this is an issue, again, that we need to be discussing and addressing with law enforcement.
And candidate Swanson, the same question.
One thing, human trafficking can't be solved by just one city. It has to be the whole region working together, because if Blaine were to eliminate human trafficking 100%, it would just move to Lino Lakes, Columbia, Edina, or someplace else in the region. So you have to have a regional effort to eliminate it. The other thing we have to do is educate people to recognize the signs of human trafficking, so they can report it to the proper, I mean, most people in Blaine can't even consider that it's happening, much less that it could even be based in here. So the education of people and letting the victims know that there are places where they can go safely and be away from the, their perpetrators.
Thank you. And again, candidate Swanson, the face of Blaine is changing. How will you be able to represent the various communities that we find in Blaine today?
Okay. Blaine is unique in that while it has a growing minority and diverse population, it doesn't have a single large individual group. A lot of cities will have a large group of Nigerians or a large group of Saudis, but this city seems to have a splattering of all groups. So it's, it's a little harder to go in and zero into just one, one community. But one thing we have to do is we have to try to integrate them into the committees that the city has, into paying attention to what's going on in the cities, and modifying our communications to identify the needs that those different communities have.
Candidate Soroya, the same question.
Yeah, so I think when it comes to diversity, I think we can start by changing our language and how we're addressing diversity. Instead of referring to people as "them," I mean, this is "we," this is our community. You know, where they, it shouldn't be as a "them." So that's number one. And I think, you know, having representation on the city council that reflects the city is extremely crucial. I have, like I said, I've lived here 17 years, and I've seen the growth of Blaine. I've seen not just racial diversity, I'm talking about young families moving in. I'm talking about people that are working remotely, people that are from, I'm from a small town in southern Iowa, you know, grew up on a farm, and I bring that background. I'm the daughter of immigrants. And so people that have a diverse experience, who have traveled to multiple countries and have lived in, you know, other cities, that can bring that experience here is crucial right now, especially as we are growing. So I'm definitely in favor of diversifying our city council and having it reflect the people that live here.
And again, candidate Soroya, how can diversity in Blaine help us grow and prosper?
I think it helps the city serve our residents better. When we have a city that reflects the population that lives here, I think we all do better. You know, I'll just share one example quickly. One of my friends was fasting during the month of Ramadan, and, you know, she's a black woman, and, you know, she has a newborn, there's a lot going on, and she accidentally left her credit card at a gas station. And she said that, you know, the encounter could have gone very terribly with police, as we've seen, but it didn't, because we have an amazing police department here that came to her home with their credit card and knew, you know, about her background and had that knowledge, and said, "Are you okay?" That was the first question that they asked her. And that empathy that they showed her, and that understanding of the culture, and as a new mother, you know, what she would be going through, was extremely important in how that played out. And we've seen other communities that don't have the same culture, for example, of our law enforcement or of our businesses, where we have issues and incidents that take place, unfortunately.
Candidate Swanson, how can diversity in Blaine help us grow and prosper?
Well, anytime you have multiple ways of looking at a problem or looking at an area, it's to benefit. We get too much of the white male looking at a problem, what you're going to get is the solution white males expect. If you can get minorities, women, looking at the same problem, you're probably going to end up with a much different answer and probably a much better answer. So I think as far as, the more people we have looking, the more different viewpoints we have looking at issues, the better off the city becomes. It's, it also helps us enable to attract different kinds of businesses to say that we have a viable workforce for different kinds of, of projects, so.
Candidate Swanson, following up on that, if elected, what would you do to encourage minority participation in government?
One of the things that, and this isn't just for minority, it's for all participation in government. Right now, Blaine has a horribly low participation. When we try to fill committees, we get almost no one applying. One of the things I'd like to try is go the way St. Louis Park does, where they have neighborhood committees that are supported by the city, that pulls people from the neighborhood actually into the committee, and help make decisions to come up to the council or the planning or park as to what, what should be done. And we tried that project multiple years ago, but unfortunately, the recession hit, and we weren't able to do it, because in order for that to work, we have to be able to give them a small amount of money, 1,500, 2,000, to be able to use on projects inside their own neighborhoods.
Thank you. And candidate Soroya, what would you do to encourage minority participation?
I think it's a matter of informing people, not just, you know, minority populations, but all populations in Blaine, about how to engage with their city council members. You know, as I'm out there, door-knocking and reaching out to the community, I am hearing a lot of concerns from constituents. And it's at the point now where I've actually, I've created a page on my website that has, that does intake on community concerns, including traffic, just so we can better follow up. So I think it is a matter of the city council member reaching out and actively documenting the concerns of the community, and making sure that they know who to reach, who their city council member is. Let's start there, right? Like, they should know who represents them, who's speaking for them, who's advocating for them. And one thing that I really want to focus on in Ward 1 especially is bringing town halls to our community, because there are a lot of similar concerns around homelessness, around crimes, North Town property, Highway 65, that we need to bring people together and have those conversations as a community.
We have a couple more questions about involvement. Candidate Soroya, as a member of the city council, how would you provide opportunities for constituents to let you know their concerns? And you touched on this a bit already.
Yeah, definitely. I think community engagement is key. I am constantly, you know, I'm the person that shows up, you know, when a new neighbor moves in and introduces them to the community, and we need to do that throughout Ward 1, not just in neighborhoods, because there are some neighborhoods in Ward 1 that are very connected, and the people are, you know, they know each other, and then there are others where people are still getting to know each other. And that's a role that the city council can play in terms of organizing community town halls, safety forums, inviting people to the city council meetings, having even an option on the website, such as my website, of doing intake on constituent concerns. And, you know, if somebody has, you know, if somebody had a fence that was broken by the city, like, who do they call to resolve that? And giving them resources and information so they can, you know, quickly address some of the, you know, concerns that they have as constituents. And again, having, giving the phone number out, giving emails out, making sure you're accessible and you have the time to commit to your constituents.
Candidate Swanson, you also touched on this a bit previously. What more would you like to say about providing opportunities for constituents to let you know their concerns?
This is, this has always been a problem, to get the citizens involved. But one thing that I think we should do is each ward should have a, an open office night at City Hall, so that, so my, Ward 1 would have a night where one of, or both of the council persons would be there to answer constituents' questions or bring their issues up to the council. It's, and those would have to be well-publicized that was happening. The other thing is we have to go back to having neighborhood meetings. We tried that, but once again, it got wiped out because of external forces. But we should have a, a meeting over at Our Saviors for the people on the far east side. We should have One Off of Cloverleaf for the people on the west side. Not an amount of time.
Well, candidate Swanson, you have a little more time to answer this question, and it's a more specific question about involvement. How will you advocate for public opinion to be honored in municipal projects? And examples might be the North Town property or 105th Avenue.
First of all, we have, it's an education to let people know that it's happening, and that's one of the things that I think we're not as, as well as we should be, in letting people know where, where things are happening. And the other thing, and particularly on the North Town property, is we have to get the people involved, but we also have to give realistic expectations, because you can have the greatest plans in the world as a city and as a, as a person, but if the owner of the property doesn't want to cooperate, it doesn't make any, any difference. This is what happened to us on the area where the old Kmart used to be. The city had excellent plans of combining the open property and our property, and we had a lot of citizen involvement, but the property owner didn't want to go along with it at the end, so it got shot out. So we need education, basically.
And candidate Soroya, how would you advocate for public opinion to be honored in municipal projects?
Yeah, so public opinion is crucial. I mean, we're talking about people's homes that they've lived in for 20, 30, 40 years that they've, you know, put their hard money towards. So that, to me, is a priority. And so seeking input, you know, the town hall, for example, is something that we absolutely need to do in Ward 1 around the North Town property. There are some really great ideas that people have. You know, I was outdoor-knocking, and someone was talking about having parks and coffee shops in that area. And other cities have done it, you know? Like, I go to Rosedale, and they have a nice mall, right? If you look at Coon Rapids, their mall is really nice. Maple Grove has a nice outdoor mall. So there are ideas out there, and there is, you know, funding there. So we need to really look at how we can go from what we have now to something that will bring money to the city and bring people back to Blaine for their shopping. And so there are projects, you know, ideas out there, and really, it's about building relationships. How can we be persuasive as a city council and get these projects done?
Moving on, so to speak, to transportation. Candidate Soroya, do you have any strategies for making public transportation more accessible for Blaine residents?
Yeah, this is definitely an issue that needs the city council's attention. So Highway 65 is impossible to cross. It's dangerous to cross. I've talked to I've talked to people who are home, you know, college students who are home for the summer, and they want, you know, they've had job opportunities across the highway, but they won't accept them because they don't want to endanger their lives crossing a highway. And that's, and then we, you know, go to some of these businesses in Blaine, and we see the signs of, you know, "Help Wanted," and they're struggling. You know, there are one or two people working in some of these places. So this is crucial. Giving people an opportunity to, you know, have a safe highway that they can cross and get to the other side of the highway for work is something that will benefit all of us. And so I think there, fixing Highway 65 is crucial. That's, again, a priority. But until that happens, you know, are there other options, such as busing people, providing other alternatives to get people there? That's something the city council really needs to give some attention to.
And candidate Swanson, do you have any strategies for making public transportation more accessible?
I'm assuming public transportation refers primarily to bussings, metro mobility, and other public means of transporting masses of people. Unfortunately, that is pretty much controlled by the Met Council and metro buses. But one thing we should do is work... There's an organization called TAB, which is Transportation Advisory Board, that controls funding. I used to serve on it. Right now, Julie Jepson is serving on it. We have to make certain that Blaine has representatives on that, either by, through the elected officials or by the appointment from process by the Met Council. But the other thing that we have to do is work with our legislature to make certain that there is funding available to do more mass transit, and particularly in the northern suburbs, where we're extremely short.
And candidate Swanson, a resident wrote in and said, "I've lived in Blaine for years, and everyone makes promises that they will fix Highway 65. How can the council actually do it?"
Basically, the councils in the process are doing it right now, and they're following the same process that we did on the Highway 35W Coalition, which is get the planning money from the feds, work with the federal government, work with MnDOT, and get the project close to being funded, and then work through the legislature to get matching funds. And as the federal money comes through, that will make the project happen. And the project right now is at the, finally gotten to the point where all it needs is funding. The planning is done, the design is pretty much done. But unfortunately, the legislature didn't pass a bonding bill this last time, which means the project is short to 29 million. That was in that bonding bill, which means we also don't have the match for the federal money that was planned to come through. So the next legislature is going to be critical as far as getting that done.
Candidate Soroya, how can the council actually do it?
I think we do it by making it a priority. And unfortunately, what I've seen over the past 17 years in Blaine, it hasn't been a priority. And when you see the actual consequences of that highway, see a slumped-over kid who is a victim of that highway, that makes it a priority for you. And it's definitely something that I want to get done. My background is in nonprofits, and an idea is just an idea until you have the money. And something that we need as a city is we need somebody lobbying on behalf of the city. We don't have a lobbyist for the city. And that's where the city council can really step up and show up. We need to be at the state legislature. As the largest city in Anoka County, we should be on the forefront of advocating for this project and getting the money that we need to get it done. So advocating for the funding, showing up, lobbying, and building relationships with our county commissioners and with our elected leaders is crucial. My nonprofit background has afforded me a lot of connections to our county commissioners and others that I will utilize to get this done.
Candidates, I cannot believe that our time is coming to a close already. We had a lot more questions than we have time for. So I'm going to end our questions from the public with a light question, and then we'll move on to closing statements. Candidate Soroya, what is your favorite place to go to in Blaine?
That's a good question. My favorite place is Aquator Park. I think it's one of the most peaceful places in Blaine. It's where we have the annual festival, and it's just walking distance from my home. But unfortunately, we're seeing it change. You know, it's no longer a place where I can walk with my kids. We do see homeless encampments in that area. There's crime and drug deals, and it's changing. And this, that's one of the primary reasons that I'm running, because I don't want, I want to have a park that my kids can go to and play, and we can have picnics and events. So it's my favorite place to go, but it's also a place that I want to really focus on and improve as a community.
Thank you. And candidate Swanson, what's your favorite place to go in Blaine?
Well, my boxer and puggle really loves the Swanson Dog Park. It's located in Aquator Park. So that's, that's probably my favorite place.
Thank you. And now your closing statement, candidate Swanson.
Okay, well, like I said in my beginning statement, is I am running because this is such a unique election where we can have up to five brand-new council persons. And my desire, and the only reason I'm running, is to bring some knowledge back to the council and help new council members understand what their role is, what the role of the city is, what it can and can't do. People have an exaggerated opinion of what the city council is capable of doing. It is really bound by law, by the rules that belong to other, the projects that belong to the county that the city can't have any impact on. So basically, I just want to keep Blaine as the kind of great place that it has been up to now.
Thank you. And candidate Soroya, closing statement.
Yeah, I think we have a lot to do in Ward 1. And I'm running because Ward 1 needs an advocate. We've seen so much growth and change in Blaine, which is great. But again, what I hear from residents in Ward 1 is, "What about us? What about the residents of Ward 1?" So new is good. We need people that have the ambition and the energy and the ideas and the connections and the experience and the skills to show up and get things done. I've lived here 17 years, and I'm tired of having to cross a dangerous highway. I'm tired of seeing homeless people in my neighborhood that need the help that we're not giving them. I'm tired of youth committing suicide in our communities, and it's becoming the norm in our city. That is not the city that I want to live in or I want my kids to live in. We're at a pivotal moment in our city's future where we can make the decision to bring new energy and new ideas and create a new path for the city that we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both candidates for speaking to voters about issues and for running in the special election for Blaine City Council, Ward 1. Thanks to North Metro for their video production, and thanks, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. As we move through the election season, link to all our local election forums at l w v a b c m n dot org, as well as the North Metro website and YouTube. If you have questions left unanswered by the forum, contact the candidates directly. To register to vote or to update your registration, in case you've moved, go online to m n votes dot org. You can also register when you go to vote. Make your voice heard in the primary election by voting on or before August 9.